Alright, it is November the 18th, 2025, 6 o'clock P M. We'll now call the Grayson County Planning Commission to order at this time. Everyone should have received your packets and the email. If not, let it be none, please. Alright, you should have received the decorum for the agenda and everything. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I believe we approved the agenda as presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of the meeting will say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The agenda is approved. You should have received the meeting minutes from October 21st. Was there any amendments that needed to be made to it? I did see one. On the, after we took a motion, it very real Mr. Ballard was not here, but I was not there. So.
So it shouldn't have been a motion.
Right. Yeah, I believe we approved the agenda as amended. Just to make sure it was. Anybody see anything else? If not, we have a motion to accept the meeting minutes from October 21st as presented. Do we have a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, let it be known to say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So the meeting minutes from October 21st are approved with the amendment made.
From Ballard to Watson.
Yes. Uh, brings us right along. No old business to discuss. Leads us into the new business, which is the review of the special use permit amendment. Deer Creek Motor Coach Homeowners Association, application 2025-0443. Ms. White, would you like to?
Sure. I'll give you a brief synopsis of the packet itself. I'll take questions from the commission if there is any. So again, the applicant is Deer Creek Motor Coach Homeowners Association Incorporated. The amendment is to an existing special use permit. The property is located at 2524 Edmund's Road in Phoenix, currently zoned rural farm. So if you remember sometime back, we had Deer Creek here talking to the planning commission about the issues that they had at the park. So this has led up to this amendment. So the, they had a previous special use permit that was approved in 2007. Their amendment would be to remove the current 10-foot interior side setbacks and reduce it to a zero feet for all individually owned lots within the resort. It was considered a plan unit, or it was approved as a plan unit development, and it catered to the premium motor coach use. Over time, many owners have added outdoor improvements, some without permits, that encroached to the 10-foot setback. The HOA came to us, tried to seek a resolve to the issue. So they've requested the amendment so that the development can comply with all the zoning regulations and so home, or excuse me, lot owners can properly permit the future improvements. So the purpose of the amendment is to bring the existing built conditions into compliance. It's to establish consistent permitting for future structures. It will allow owners flexibility for outdoor features such as their extensions to their buildings, their kitchens, pergolas, et cetera. It will maintain safety through the building and the fire code standards, and it will align regulations with the established compact design of the resort. So my analysis was after reviewing the application, the request, and I'm taking all of these considerations based off of our code of Virginia. So the request does not change the use, the density, or the intensity of the development. The resort was built with a compact resort, I cannot talk tonight, I apologize, resort-style layout, which differs from the typical rural farm development patterns. Adopting a zero-foot setback allows the county to permit and regulate improvements that already exist or are planned. Building and fire codes will continue to govern minimum separation and safety requirements. No increase in public service or infrastructure is demanded, is anticipated. Proper public notice was provided. I've received no comments up until today's date. I've not received anything. The findings based off of the code, comprehensive plan and the application, the amendment meets the county's special use permit criteria. It remains compatible with the zoning ordinance intent. It supports public health safety through permitting and code requirements. It maintains compatibility with surrounding properties, and it does not have an adverse impact on infrastructure or services. So my recommendation to the planning commission is approval of the special use permit amendment with the conditions. One, that all existing and future structures must comply with the building code and fire requirements, and all improvements must obtain proper county permits and inspections. So in conclusion, the amendment is corrective in nature. It aligns the county regulations with how the resort was developed, ensures safety throughout proper permitting, and maintains the resort's approved character without increasing density and altering its use. Based on the staff report, does anyone have questions?
On the building code, such as, I know the roofing was mentioned, and I'm just trying to consider if neighbors getting along, if someone decides if we go zero feet, they put their roof across their whole property, all that water is going to run off on the neighbor for their being in the building and their motor coach, whatever it may be. That is a main concern of mine because I could see a lot of trouble coming from that.
That's a good assumption, that's a good analysis. That's something that we probably should take into consideration. It's one of the things that I had actually thought about. An option you could propose is that the HOA maintains a responsible drainage between the properties. It's just a thought, we can add further discussion on that.
Is there anything in building code that you're aware of that governs that?
For drainage? I know in current residential construction, you have to have positive drainage away from foundations. Otherwise, water, as you know, will go follow its least restrictive and will undermine buildings, foundations, and the line. So it could be something that we could tack on as a condition that homeowners association is responsible for maintaining the drainage on, for each person, or recreational, I'll say it's recreational even though it's rural farm. We all know that this is a motor coach resort. It is seasonal, and so be it to the homeowners association and the lot owners.
But they do allow year-round, correct?
Most of them are not year-round.
Most of them.
I don't think so. I think their most of them are snowbirds.
About the structure next to it?
The pergla, the buildings, yes, the outdoor kitchens, that stuff's still going to be there. That would be all.
You know, myself, I see major issues coming from that aspect.
Yeah, just kind of old neighbors because your water's running off of them.
Right. And if you like the one in front of you, you'd like the one on the other side. First thing that runs that way. We can guttering, I'll spill.
You can't go over to the level of that on the gutter and work it up to that.
You have to have gutters, and the drainage from the gutters has to be a non-issue.
Which is your gutter, and you're going to turn your spout to your neighbor's land, right?
Over there?
You have to turn your spout away from everybody.
Right.
You have to drain your gutter to an acceptable place. In other recreational lots or areas such as this, have we done anything in the past that you're aware of to lessen the setback?
Shoreline Recreation does not have a setback either. So it's basically the same principle. Shoreline Recreation is what's happened here in this resort. There are no setbacks there either. And I've not had, the only issues that I've ran into in Shoreline Recreation typically are VDOT issues, especially the one coming off of 58 and after the bridge. There's a lot of runoff from 58, and it goes down through those channels and then out to the river. And so I've seen situations where they burned it back over to them. They're called VDOT, they're not, they're not fixed there. That's the only thing that I've ever seen twice that I've ran into before.
Seems like, I looked this up today, it seems like they didn't have exact the dimensions of these lots. Seems like they said an average was 35 foot long, but they didn't give a width.
On the plat. Which I did not attach. The original plat is actually in the other special use permit. I don't have that written either.
Right, that's included with it.
Thanks. You'll need to grab it?
Do you? It seems like on Shoreline Recreation that we put some type of stipulation in there about the drainage. Do you remember that? Because it was a concern then also.
You might have been wondering what that was.
That was before my day. Think it's, well, not that. Seems like we put something in there on that that would take care of those. It has been a lot. It's been a lot. Seems like we discussed the drainage and house of facilities building. Some issues. It took me so long. Just to be out there surveying all the time, do you go into issues with drainage? I'd be able to stay for a minute.
No, not so much with drainage. I was trying to think over there, those roofs are paid. I've done a couple of lots over there, just marking. Trying to think if they had any kind of drainage system dropped in. It's probably quite, quite about that.
It says on their website, Deer Creek Motor Coach Resort is restricted to Class A and Super C motorhomes with a minimum length of 34 feet. That's, that's just the motor coach itself.
Minimum?
And total weight. So motor coach itself would be 34 feet long.
Pretty much fills up the plat.
That's good. Tell you what. Size of the lot, so. The concrete pads that the park had, everything is probably what you said.
The water on the water, it goes. That's a ridiculous thing. Drainage system.
Where have you leaned that, Maggie?
I know, I know. I'm going to want that part of the sponsor to extend it. It's tiny.
Tiny, tiny.
I had to print it, didn't I?
When we talked about the zero setbacks, I think I've asked this before, as far as the joining on the top of the building, the subdivision. We were talking about them at zero against the joining.
Only on the interior, anterior. Your, um, so you're just talking about, yeah, that little section in there, and then I.
Just interior lot, not the outside boundary lot.
Correct. So it's on your, in your staff report, I highlighted exactly where it was going to be at, on your interior side. So even though this right section right here is still Deer Creek, that is their common area. We're not encroaching upon that. So this exterior line stays the same. The only thing that's going to change is the interior lot lines between the property owners.
That was my biggest concern, but the joining only wants to build a fence, and he's part of them, and it's having to run up to the back of the building and have to offset his fence to.
Right.
On itself.
Or if they put privacy fences in between? The lot.
Well, that, that was the other thing. If you had, if it's zero, and they put buildings back to back on two different lots.
Would that not be a fire hazard?
Yeah, or how would they maintain the buildings?
There, that's that fire code separation that I spelled out. So it would be nothing, it wouldn't be any different in my mind than when you build a garage to an attached home, an attached garage to a home. There's always a fire separation inside of the building code that's going to be required. So if they want to build that close to each other, then Keith, our building official, would then make them alter. So those, those properties that are already there, they've already got their buildings, I can see there potentially being alterations made maybe at the other owner's expense that wants to put up something, you know? Because it's, otherwise typically it's five foot is what we would do in fire separation in the building code. We've always used that five foot rule, but it doesn't always necessarily have to be five foot.
Brian, just a quick question for you. Is there any way that you could pull this up for us to look on this screen and see the size of some of these lots? Because even with the magnifying glass, I can't tell what it looks like, dollars.
I could probably pull up the, uh, those in county J O's.
The tax map number, Brian, is going to be.
Is it that 47A64C?
Yeah.
Just to fill you in, when we discussed a little bit on the river lots, as we refer to them often, that we did discuss the drainage, somewhat of that, the buildings, the boundaries, and we went through that, but it's been so long ago, we, Lisa and I, we can't remember exactly what was stipulated.
Do 96A18E.
So, but we do recall, I'll discuss it in there.
All right, what was that number again?
96 dash eight, dash 18E.
There is a map in here. I've looked at it before, right back here, but it doesn't do us any good whatsoever. No, you're not causing me any trouble. It's just, it has no, this was a, this was a preliminary drawing of what, what is now currently Deer Creek. But the one that I gave you that we can't see is so tiny. I can't get the clerk's office to print it out.
Maybe he can get us a lot, we'll have, and we can see the size of some of it.
Brian, can you, do you know how to, uh, measure?
No.
All right, for the last, with a question mark.
All right.
Right there. Do the drop down. Move it back there. And the second one from the left.
So. Pick a lot. Just measure those yellow lines from, from yellow line to yellow line.
Yeah, it's 120.
So it's 120 foot long?
What's this total length?
Yeah, I was going to say, pull that.
Keep going down to the road.
134 foot.
That's to the center of the road.
To the center of the road. And then what is our, our width, Brian? Go over. 40 feet? 40, 41 feet. So 45, 130. Some of them are going to be a little bit bigger, I think, based on the way the layout is. Yeah, some may be a little smaller. But you can see in this picture that most of those all have 150 square foot building already on the lot.
And you see most of them are already less than 10 feet.
Yeah, and that's, the issue that they're trying to resolve is being in compliance. Because what was happening, my understanding was, building department was one out there. They were seeing things that were built without permits, that were non-compliant, not structurally compliant. So they were having to make these changes. And this is just kind of per this issue.
Is it feasible? I'm just throwing this out to the discussion. Is it feasible to? Well, when they went out and found the ones without, that will put up without permits, were those things, those issues taken care of and permits purchased?
Yeah, so what's, what's happened is, in the past, there are people that, if you remember, Mr. Terry Carter was here. He was saying that there were landowners that wanted to build outdoor kitchens, and they were encroaching upon property lines. And others already had them without permits, or pergolas, than if they had put in without permits. And typically, a pergla doesn't require a permit. It's maybe an expansion of a roof or something that's structured. So that's where they found the issues. And I do know that when our building inspector was out there, he did see the issue. He had the homeowner make those corrections. Even though it wasn't required a permit, it was for life safety issues. So they made the issue, they made him fix the issue.
So those issues have been resolved?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we've, that's.
Quick question.
Yeah, I mean, they, they got resolved, and so I'm sure there's more issues out there, but you won't, we wouldn't know until there was a permit again and we were on time.
What I was getting at is, is it feasible to adopt the permanent structures that are there? However, from this day going forward, have like a five-foot setback due to fire and safety and drainage issues?
Your recommendation would be since zero would be fine?
I'm just asking if it's something like that, it would be feasible too? Go ahead and say those issues were resolved, that's there now, permanent issues, but if it is allowed or moved, it has to comply with, say, five feet. With those type of block sizes, I couldn't foresee needing a building that would require it to be built right on the property.
I don't think it'll be a building. It will be those pergolas and outdoor kitchen areas that they want to build.
Thank you.
We do. I'm pretty sure most everyone out there has a 150 square foot building on the side. Because that was when they sold them, that's what the intent was. A storage building and a motor coach. They have since expanded those little buildings to indoor kitchens, washer and dryer rooms. There are some that have bunk beds in them, which aren't supposed to be there. They're not, these are non-habitant structures, but they've turned them into city rooms in the lot.
And you know, a lot of people, when they're camping like that, they like to have a fireplace. Therefore, they might own woodshed. I mean, I'm just trying to think of all the possibilities that will keep the strife down amongst neighbors and cover the county outside. If that makes sense to you.
Or even if it was just one foot, with the separate, separate, that'd be a foot each side, that's another, that's a lot of wood.
The zeros, that's, what'd you say, the fire code is generally five feet?
Well, it's, it don't have to be, that's the thing, because there's this thing called fire separation. And so it's not any different from townhouses. You have a. And so it's not any different from townhouses. You have a fire separation between each unit. So, it would be the responsibility of the owner or the adjacent owner, if there's want to do improvements, that that particular building is upgraded to meet fire separation codes. And that was the reason that I plugged that in there, that it had to meet fire code. So that the issues would be handled through the building department and not rely on a special use condition. Because the fire code's gonna be way more stringent than what we're doing here.
You're doing a lot of surveying out there today.
Shoot that narrow call.
Adjudicate issues between the lot owners?
I guess we're supposed to consider it, but no, not really.
Right. It could possibly.
You're just trying to be, do, do your due diligence to prevent, uh, neighbor disputes, but.
Right.
You and I both know that. It's not always.
I mean, when it comes down to it, the HOA should have implemented something, in fact, prior to
Is there icy areas on those lots? Um, I think it's more like a strip of concrete and maybe a little bit of grass.
They have much grass.
I don't think so. I think most of it is definitely impervious surface. Brian, if you will hit the I button up there.
No.
That will go away. There you go.
Oh. Appreciate it.
You will.
That's a close look.
It is, um, and, and they really enjoy it.
They have a few walls.
Yes, they really enjoy it.
There's only one lot there outside that has no building. And one that is, has no concrete pad, no anything.
Is that the one in the very bottom corner in Brian?
This one has nothing. And this one here has no building.
Brian, does that belong to the homeowners association?
BOA Property Investments LLC.
Yeah, I don't know. I thought maybe that might, they might.
This one's, uh.
Right, yeah.
I was saying six inches. If we join it, that's six inch. You got a foot between them.
I tell you what, they run buildings right on top of each other. To me, that would look. And I don't think they wanna, I don't think they wanna make the lot, the lots look like that, cause it is a high-end resort. I don't wanna make it look.
Those motor coaches cost three hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, a lot more than that.
Yeah, I, I think the application in the original was three hundred fifty thousand plus, um, their coaches.
Really, don't take a bad apple. You run on that line and all the water drain off on the neighbor and somebody else sees it and likes it and here the next one goes. All of that's just my main concern.
But now, have they, they all talked and agreed? This is what they've all wanted as a, um, I believe they had a Zoom call, Zoom meeting, um, with, uh, most everyone and.
Does that take a while, do you know?
I don't think so, yes. The HOA is gonna take responsibility and maintain their quality and, um, of their.
It's an association, so they have meetings to govern themselves.
Correct.
Right.
And if somebody does something wrong, they're not gonna stick up.
I think we're taking too much responsibility in the reaction. If it touches the responsibility off the camp, then that is.
The better part of the story.
That's right. That, that's the main concern with us is, how does it affect the camp? Is it, you know?
I believe the homeowners association would be responsible for any issues within HOA.
Irrigation issues or anything.
Yeah, I mean, we ended up with issues where, um, if it became an issue with a erosion sediment control, stormwater issue, then the county would be involved, but most everything, as you see right there, is all impervious. There's a retention, the retention pond there. Uh, I believe there's also a creek that is just directly behind where we have the agricultural, um, parcel in the backside of, of the.
I think we discussed before that that was marshy.
Very marshy back there.
Maybe that's why I'm.
Could be.
Look, there's another pond.
All that water's out. Look pretty muddy, uh, joint.
That's the, uh.
See, right over there.
That comes off the pond to the right.
We don't have any input from the HOA here to.
No, not to mine. I told him that, um, I would give him a leak, even like he didn't even get here because he is back waiting, so.
What's the commission think? I think we need to approve this.
That's what they requested. And then, of course, using the, uh, section in the zoning ordinance under special use permits, the board of supervisors would, um, either approve or deny.
The zero setback did it enough to affect the building.
So. Um.
I don't know what you're spamming.
In your staff report, um, it would be, uh, under staff recommendation, uh, staff recommends planning commission approval amendment to special use permit Deer Creek Motor Coach Homeowners Association, which includes amendments to the required setback standards per five dash eleven three A to reduce the setback as necessary or desirable based on the specific circumstances of the project. So that was the, uh, text amendment that the planning commission put in place to be able to assist Deer Creek in their quest.
Does the legal look at this?
Has legal looked at it? Not on this one, sir.
Do we have a motion to adjourn the public hearing at this time?
Oh, no.
Do we have a second? All in favor, let me know and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We are now in and of the public hearing on Deer Creek Motor Coach Homeowners Association. Again, if you will, can we, uh, say back? Who was that guy that was with you? Lonnie C. Andrews. Is that the guy that was here and left?
Yeah.
Says Adam. The people up here see.
Twenty-one eighty-four in the joint.
Doesn't look like it's in my journey way better. Index.
It appears Mr. Andrews has legs. So. That being said, the opportunity was given. We have a motion to close the public hearing.
So, no.
Do we have a second? All in favor, let me know and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is now closed. All right. Mission, what we will do?
I make a motion that we approve the agenda. All right, I'll make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the amendment to the special use permit for Deer Creek Motor Coach Homeowners Association. Application number two zero two five zero four four three to reduce the interior side setback from ten feet to zero feet. Recommendation includes the conditions outlined by staff specifically. One, all existing and future structures must comply with applicable building and fire code requirements. And two, all improvements must contain the required county permission inspections. We find that the amendment meets the intent of the zoning ordinance, supports public health and safety, and does not negatively impact surrounding properties or property assets.
Right. We have a recommendation of approval as stated. Uh, including the conditions outlined by staff. Do we have a second?
A second.
Mr. Black, I want you to do a little, I will do a little follow-up.
Mr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Lawyer?
Aye.
Mr. Martin? Mr. Ward?
Uh.
Stash.
Commission, thank you for coming tonight and what you do. Black, we appreciate. Have a motion. Second. Have a second. All in favor, let me know and say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Planning commission is now adjourned.